All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting order. I have 7:00 PM. We have no amendments to the agenda that I'm aware of, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll by roll call.
Counselor Caceres.
Aye.
Counselor Seha.
Aye.
Counselor Lee.
Aye.
Counselor Seeny.
Aye.
Counselor Wick.
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Right, moving on, no presentations, public comment, let's see. I am not seeing anybody in the attendees. I know we have a couple of people present there, Colleen, is anybody have a public comment they'd like to give?
Yes, we do have one person, and if you'd like to get in step up to the podium.
It's hard to know where to look, there's a lot of.
So, please go ahead and give your, your name for the record, and are we still asking for addresses, Ron, or is that a no-no now?
You know, they can just tell us if they live inside Umsville or not.
I'm Tricia Josie, I live not in an Umsville address, I'm about a mile down Mill Creek.
Okay, close enough.
I'm local, and I'm here as a member of Alcoholics Anonymous, I would like to thank the mayor for responding to my email earlier this week, offering us time at the city council, and especially I'd like to thank Councilwoman Seeny who reached out to me and has offered the use of the gymnasium of Bethel Baptist, two blocks from here, and I cannot tell you how overjoyed my community is with Alcoholics Anonymous that we have found a home here in this town. I hope each of you received my email, and it just, it means a lot that there is a place in this community for folks to meet and find a solution, because it's not like it doesn't affect our community, so I'm just here tonight to say thank you to all involved that we did find a room with a roof with some chairs, because that's what it takes to have a meeting, so. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Anyone?
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, we really appreciate that, and, and obviously, you know, and any issues that pop up, or if you guys ever, ever need a place again, feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much.
Was there any other public comment out there, Colleen?
None at this time.
All right, so, no visitors, consent agenda, everybody get a chance to read through the minutes. Were there any questions, comments, concerns? And then also we have on here cancelling the December 27th meeting. I think we can probably just wrap those two things together, is everybody okay with cancelling the meeting on the 27th?
Aye. Aye.
So, wrapping that into the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, vote by roll call.
Counselor Caceres.
Aye.
Counselor Seeny, oh, excuse me, I'm out of order, Counselor Seha.
Aye.
Counselor Lee.
Aye.
Counselor Seeny.
Aye.
Counselor Wick.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I can get the vote.
Oh.
I'm an aye as well, Colleen, it's okay. Aye.
Oh my goodness.
We all have those kinds of days, it's okay. So, no public hearings, no old business, new business, we have the contract award for the booster station emergency generator. I'm sure Ron has a presentation, but this is something we have talked about forever. Did everybody get a chance to like read through all the information on that? What do you got for us, Ron?
Really, just to reiterate what's in the staff report, this has been one of the city's priority projects, because as you know, with our million gallon reservoir, when the power goes out, we really have no way to transfer that water through this, to continue to supply water through the system, other than what happens to be at the, inside the reservoir at that moment. One of the other issues that we have when we have a power failure is the system's not pressurized, so even though you can gravity flow what remaining waters in the reservoir out to the community until it runs out, some of the areas in the city that have higher elevations, like in Flowers Meadows, we can't get that water to those locations because they're slightly uphill from that, that reservoir, and so this has been a priority project, much needed project. As council knows, we've been working to get this money added into the water improvement funds so that we can complete this project. And we, we went out to bid and we got three bidders. And the R.I. Ramirez Company, I believe is the name of the company that was.
RL.
RL's.
RL Ramirez.
Oh, RL, sorry. Was, was the company that was our lowest bidder, and it actually came in under our engineered estimates, which doesn't happen all the time. So, it's great that we did a good job getting the advertisement out there, and our engineers talked to those, went over the specs of the project, and, and Phil's confident that they're, they're gonna bid on, they're gonna be able to complete the project as we designed it.
This is, this is one of those vote now before they change their mind situations?
Yeah, I really tried to get it on the last council agenda, but they, they had some work to do, so.
All right, well, does anybody have any questions, comments?
Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take that as a no, Nico, did you have anything, Angie?
Pretty straightforward, Mayor.
Cool, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract with RL Reimers Company for the water pump station auxiliary power improvement, J O two five nine nine point four oh two oh, as presented by West Tech Engineering.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll by roll call.
Counselor Caceres.
Aye.
Counselor Seha.
Aye.
Counselor Lee. I'll come back, Counselor Seeny.
Aye.
Counselor Wick.
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger.
Aye.
Counselor Lee.
Aye.
And motion passes.
Excellent. Moving on, Ron, your report.
So my report, I put some of the standard, regular items that I continue to update council on, there's, there's two items there that I'd like to note to your attention. One is, we do have a development code update that'll be coming to you at the first meeting in January. That update, there's, there's some small minor items in there that were, were more grammatical or clarifications, but the bulk of that update is really just memorializing that the state implements the, or that the city implements the state fire code. This was recommended by our legal counsel, apparently there were a couple of Luba cases that he felt opened the door on appeals to development applications, not having to apply the fire code parameters, it's kind of an unusual situation, because the fire district under Marion County is empowered to put fire code conditions on applications, land use applications that come before the city. But, there's really no authority, there's really nothing statewide that grants them the authority to be able to do that, so. He just felt it was best that we get that memorialized in our development code, and as I told council when we did the rewrite of the development code, you know, expect that to be a living document, because we're constantly looking at it, refining it, cleaning it up, and, and trying to improve it as the time changes, so what we don't want to do is have that document sit for five or so years, and then have it completely out of compliance with case law and/or state law, and so we did do our DLCD notice on that, and we're gonna try to get it before the planning commission for an advisory hearing in December. That may or may not happen, because we did have one member resign from the planning commission, but that's not a requirement, that's just something that we'd like to do, so if that doesn't happen, it'll just come before council in January. The other thing that we're looking to do, there's a statewide grant that opened up to install veterans memorials or war memorials in your community, this is kind of one of those projects that came out of our visioning plan and fits well within our branding that we're wanting to do in the community, and it also hits that category of community art. And so, a staff would like to apply for that grant, one of the requirements is that we work with a local organization that is, mission is to work with veterans, and so we reached out to the state and VFW, and they're, they're gonna partner with us, and actually already met with us and looked at some designs, and talked to us about, you know, what the memorial might look like. I'm not sure that we'll be successful in getting the grant, because it's a small pool of money, $300,000 for the entire state, but we would like to compete for some of that money. And if I can share my screen, I think Colleen is gonna go ahead and let me do a screen share. So, I'm gonna show just a couple of images of the, we've narrowed it down to two designs, and this, this design is a fairly nice design, what we like about this one is called, wow, see, I forgot what the title of this one was. But basically, this is designed to be a veterans memorial and a patriotic memorial, and what we liked about this one is, is it's got kids involved in it, I know we had talked about in one of our programs, trying to get some art that memorialized families and kids in the community, so, in this particular one, they put the, the different branches of the military in a, in a circular bench like this, or a semi-circular bench around it. We'd probably do something just a little bit different. But, this particular memorial is fairly inexpensive to do this. A monument with the medallions, the concrete work, we're probably looking at a budget of about forty to forty-five thousand dollars. And the grant will pay up to ninety percent, so I think the match for the city is, is ten percent, so, you know, it's a four or five thousand dollar match, that's, that's pretty good. And then, this was the one that we really liked, why is that not working? It should come up, okay, hopefully you can see that on your screen. Can you see that, okay, council? What we really liked about this one, this one's called Returning Home, and we just think this one says a message without actually having an explanation. And we really like that one as well, now this one's double the price, so our budget on this one would be around eighty thousand for the project. And so these are the two that we're looking at, like I say, we'd probably apply for, we'd probably try to make our grant look a little bit more appealing and do some in-kind contributions, so, you know, maybe our contribution would be twenty or twenty-five percent. So, you know, you're looking at somewhere between eight and fifteen thousand dollars in city contribution. If we were to apply for these grants, if we were successful, then we would need to look at the budget for next fiscal year and, and get that included. And then, in either of these cases, if we were gonna do something, our group really didn't like the monument style, you know, that looks like a, you know, a headstone or something, but we did really like something like this, where we had, this was an inexpensive way to go over the bronze medallions, where we could memorialize the branches of service, and we really did like this phrase, we've seen this as a very common sentence to honor those who have served in both times of war and peace. And so, we were thinking of something that resembles this, but would be done a little slightly different, that would sit in front of the memorial. So, it's one of those things where, you know, we went out and, you know, this is a, this is a project we think aligns with the, with one of the, several of the council goals, actually, it's not a project that we had necessarily budgeted, or that we had planned, but it's one of those opportunity projects, and we just want to get guidance from the council, if they're supportive, if they, if you have a preference, one way or the other, on, on if we move forward, do we move forward with design one or design two, and just what is your commitment level for, for a project like this?
I'll be honest with you, I don't like either design. And, and my, my reasoning for that is not to go down a rabbit hole, but, you know, the world we are living in is changing, and I think that both of those could be considered exclusionary to certain people. On the one you have what, what appears to be a young boy holding the flag, and the girl is not, and on the other one you have what is, what is generally depicted as, as a normal family, but I know a number of soldiers that are part of the LGBTQ community, and I, I don't take that, and, and I, I mean, I personally was involved with two of my soldiers helping to transition, so I, I feel that both of those are not depicting our modern military in a way that is truly representative of our veterans anymore. And I understand that my, my statement even saying that might ruffle some feathers, but I am not a fan of either one, the, the obelisk with each branch symbol, I like that, I like the phrase, but I, I'm not a fan of either one of those, those statues.
I do, I do like both of them, but I, I was gonna bring up the same thing Derek is bringing up. I think some people might be offended or feel excluded.
Okay.
I do like.
Let me stop to share while I do a quick, I'm gonna do just a little quick search, and I'll show you an alternative design, which I think addresses exactly what you're talking about. Our veterans committee that we work with did not like it, and that's the reason why I didn't present it, but let me, let me bring that up, obviously, you know, council has to, it has to be a project you guys wanna do.
Not, not to put anybody on, on the spot here, Ron.
Yes.
And, and it, and it could have been something that I completely missed, but is, is there any reason that Scott and I were not involved in these discussions, given the fact that we are both veterans?
No, it's just the grant, we found out about the grant like ten days ago, and, oh, we, we were trying to check the boxes and the box, box priority number one from the grant, in order to get the grant, you had to partner with a veterans group.
Okay.
On the design.
Makes complete sense, I just, I just wanted to double check.
It wasn't that, it wasn't that we were trying to exclude anybody, had this come forward to, you know, us as just a project, we certainly would have done that. Okay, so, I'm gonna go ahead back and share my screen with you now. This is a design that we looked at, and we did like this because it is an inclusional, and basically what this is, is a group of diverse children of different races, it also depicts somebody who's mobility impaired, so you're covering a lot of different area. And what you would do with a design like this is you, they're saying the pledge of allegiance to a flag. So, the flag, you would either put in a flagpole, or the monument that we talked about with a flag on it, and, and, and the writing, and then we could do something like that, this fits somewhere in the middle, the, this one with installation and all the other work, if we did a flagpole, we're probably in the upper end, the eighty, eighty-five thousand dollar range, if we didn't do a flagpole and just the monument, it's probably sixty thousand dollar range, so, for us, we would be looking at somewhere around, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars in matching funds. But this one does hit all those different areas of diversity that you talked about.
I, I actually like this one a lot better, and, not, not, not that I'm an artist by any means, but you know, we're, we're talking about a, a memorial, and we have five major branches, obviously there's Space Force now, which is the sixth branch, but we have, we have five branches, there are five children there, I feel that's something that is a lot more, a lot more inclusionary and a lot more representative of, at least, our, our military in a more modern sense. So I, I would be much more inclined to support, you know, something along these lines, as opposed to the other two that were presented. Anybody else?
I like this. I think I could just repeat what you said, I like the idea of the flag.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna have this, I, I think a flag is something that should be in the mix with that also.
Yeah, I, and I, if, if we're gonna have continued discussions with state and VFW, I would absolutely love to be a part of those discussions. I, I, I can't fathom why they wouldn't like this one, but, you know, I, I think something like this is, is a lot more in keeping with, with our community and our, our values and our goals, and how our community has been growing and changing, and it is also in keeping with the US military as a whole, and how we are an ever-growing and changing force, you know, we do allow women in combat arms now, we've had a number of women pass Ranger School, we've had a few women actually pass through selection for being Green Berets, and just recently in the US Army, we had our first female pass the US Army Sniper School, so I, I think having something that is more representative of that is more in keeping with what we would like in our community.
Ron, was there a reason, did they say why they didn't like this one?
Well, no, it's, they just ruled it out, I think because they liked the other two better. And, you know, you have to remember, you're, when you're, we're part, we, we asked them to just support our application, because that was a grant requirement. And if you can say that they're involved, you get extra points, you know, like if they were involved with the design or the decisions, now, they're very flexible, I could go back to them, and I did tell them, you know, we'll show these designs to council. They preferred the coming home, but you have to remember, you know, this is a group of people that served in, you know, World War II or Korea, probably, you know, they're, they're, the, the representation of the memorial speaks to them differently than it would somebody in the modern military, probably. And I think that's why they like that, I think that probably resembled experiences that they had. Perhaps, and, and that's, and that's why they really liked it, but we did talk about, okay, you know, these are our three choices. The reason why we're involving families or children is because of our branding, you know, one of the things we talked about earlier were what we called these Easter eggs, where we would position art in the community that would become an attractant, that would help support our brand, and, so we're looking at these types of things, because we want to come back to council at our retreat and talk about some additional projects that will fit along those lines. And what we don't want to do is, is completely go off-brand with a project when we're trying to bring everything in a line, so that's why we, we chose these particular designs, now, by no means are the, you know, you could just do a slate wall with an inscription on it, and the, and the logos, and that can be a memorial, but we wanted to elevate it and do something a, a little bit different.
I, I think the symbolism here is, is important, I mean, God knows, I look at it now, and I was, I was a child the first time I went to Afghanistan. But, I, I, I think something like this is, is poignant, and it is important, and it is elevating the memorial in a way, and I think there's a number of ways that, if we wanted to, that we could, we could build upon this as like a, a foundation of what we want for some sort of memorial. I don't, I don't know exactly how the grant is worded, but if, if having more groups support our application helps, I've, I've got a number that I'm sure would support it in a heartbeat.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I think really it's, it's about, it's having, how far along is the project? How does the design of the project or the project itself fit within the long-term plans of the city? And then you do have to have a group that represents veterans as a supporting agency, so we've got all, all those things for the grant application, so if, 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 I guess since Scott's the other veteran, right, Scott, is that what I heard you?
Yeah.
Yours, yeah, how do you feel about this one?
I like Mayor's idea on bringing, you know, having a meeting with VFW, if we're able to do that over Zoom, I would definitely like to attend that as well. I I don't have any issues with any of the monuments, but there and Seeny, or, sorry.
Angie brought up some good points, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure Hank Porter, who Mayor, you're speaking with, was the representative, and we don't anticipate having another meeting with them unless you wanna, you know, go down and, and meet with him about something, but if I, if I tell him this is the design, they would, they're fine with it.
I, I mean, I was, I'm, I'm calling Hank tomorrow, so I can just say, hey, man, you know, the, the our, our conversation we're gonna have is some completely off-topic, but I can, I can bring this up and just say, hey, you know, we talked about this at our council meeting last night, we give Ron a call, you know, here, here's the reasoning, I don't see that being an issue, he's a good guy, I don't, I don't see that.
He's, no, I, I don't think they, they were like, oh, well, we're not gonna support it if you pick this design, they were just like, we like this design better, and here's why. And we did talk about budget, we said, well, you know, there's a significant budget gap from one to the other. And, you know, that may, that may in itself dictate us going with a different design, but I don't think they were, I, I think if I send him an email and said, hey, this is the design we decided to go with, they're fine with it. The, my only concern about, like I say, I, I, if, if, if we weren't in such a time crunch, because we, we really gotta get this out the week after Thanksgiving into the application, it's due on the eighth, I, I tend to like to get those out a few days early, so we're hoping to get it out on the fourth into the pool. If we needed to meet with them, then I would say we could, yeah, let's set it up, but let's go to them, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're a little, it's a little harder for them to get to us than it would be for us to get to them.
I, I, I would say, Ron, move, move forward with it, and if, if there's any hiccups, I, I have contacts with Legion down in Albany, multiple VFW, we're not gonna have a problem getting a veterans group to support it, so, so move forward, and if for some reason they were resistant or whatever, that, that's not gonna be a problem.
Okay, but council, so the two things I just need to get consensus from council is, one, you're all supportive of a memorial, this design, because this is what we would submit in, in some fashion, and then, and then you're okay. Basically, you know that we're gonna have to dedicate a few funds to this.
Does anybody have any issues with it at all?
I don't, and I really like this design better as well. I think it represents more of an honoring of something.
You know, we're trying to decide where to, where to cite this, but now that I sit here and I look at this, and I think of the flagpole, I'm wondering if we could not actually cite this right at City Hall where our flagpole is. That, that might be.
That actually.
Did you like?
Yeah.
Yeah, it kind of ran across my mind.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna look at that and see what the space requirement is, because I think that actually would be great to have this monument right at City Hall, right downtown, where people could.
I mean, if, if not, the other spot that popped out in my head was right out in front of Maud's there now. We're, we're already doing work, and that is a kind of a, an aesthetic artistic piece that, you know, right, right in that, that L shape there, throwing a flag and, and having the memorial there, maybe something that, you know, it, it kind of attracts people to the park. you know, it, it kind of attracts people to the park a little bit.
Yeah, that, that was our other site. Uh, when we were thinking of the, one of the monuments, we were thinking maybe Tower, that Tower Park next to City Hall or in front of Mods. But yeah, I could actually, if we do a flagpole, I could see this in front of Mods. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, we're going to fine tune that, uh, folks, and then we're going to submit the application and, and we'll see if we're successful. And if we're successful, we can tweak it. Come back to council.
And any other, you know, conversations we have, please keep me involved. And I'm, I'm sure Scott would like to be involved as well. Just, you know, throw us on the email chain or something.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll email the VFW. I'll, I'll make sure you two are included in there just so you, that you're linked in in the conversation. Um, again, I don't think, I don't think that they're, I don't think they're going to have an issue. So good. Well, that's all I have for my report. If council has, uh, uh, anything else that they would, uh, have questions about or need to know, I'm happy to answer.
I've got nothing. Anybody? So, all right. Moving on, we got, uh, Mayor and Counselor reports. Anybody have anything? Anything for the good of the order? Uh, so the only thing that I have is y'all are going to be stuck with me slightly longer. Uh, I was supposed to be going to Tajikistan in January. That just got bumped till April, so now I'm not going anywhere until February. Um, I, I was going to bring up, Ron, I was going to ask you to, um, maybe, maybe talk to Chief and see if he can't put out a little blurb in the newsletter or something, um, talking to a few different friends in law enforcement, uh, and then even just, I, I mentioned before the meeting, I had a, a friend who got their car stolen the other day. Uh, there has been a rash of car thefts, catalytic converter thefts. Um, I had a community member reach out to me today about car thefts and vandalism ha- vandalism happening on First Street. Um, so see if we can have Chief maybe put out a blurb about just, uh, ways to be a little bit safer. And if he is aware of, of any trends that are occurring, obviously the, the catalytic converter thefts are, are becoming more common, especially up in the, in the Portland area. Maybe put something like that in the newsletter just to make sure that we keep the community aware, um, and give them some ideas about how to, you know, protect their vehicles a little bit better.
Yeah, the kettle really is. Um, my husband had his car parked in Salem and, uh, someone caught, like they caught him crawling underneath his rig.
Oh, God.
So it, it, yeah, I think it's trickling out our way.
So I, I just throw something in the newsletter, or if he wants to pop into the next meeting and just give a, you know, a, a, a two-minute spiel real quick so that we can, you know, put that on the video and get it out to the community. I think that would be fantastic.
Yeah, there, there are, uh, they, they have done a couple, uh, regarding, um, just, uh, watching in your neighborhood for crime. And I think there's something on our website about it. And then I believe there, there, one of the videos that we have, uh, that the PD is going to work on is just things that you can do, uh, to protect yourself and, and your assets. We haven't really seen a huge spike. What happens is, is, uh, we tend to get a little bit of a run and then we end up arresting an individual and, and then um, a lot of the subsequent crimes that we didn't know they were committing usually stop. And then, um, and then somebody else starts up again. So it kind of goes in these ebbs and flows.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not aware of any, uh, uptick going on. There, obviously there's always a certain amount that occurs and it's, like I say, it ebbs and flows, but yeah, I think that's always a good message and, and we'll continue to work on that. The newsletter went out today for this month, but we can certainly get it in next month's edition, Mayor.
I, I know there's been a, a small handful on First Street and it may just be that nothing was, was large enough to even warrant getting our own police department involved. Uh, so, you know, worst case scenario, hey, maybe drive down First Street a couple extra times each evening, you know, that kind of thing. But, uh, you know, I, I had a, 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 one community member specifically reach out to me and I've seen another, a number of comments on the, the community pages and whatnot. So, um, I think it's a good thing just for our PD to be aware of and for community members to be aware of.
And our police department does, uh, monitor the community pages as well. So do, so do we, so that they, when they see stuff like that, they, they do try to even respond if somebody didn't report it. We'll reach out and contact those folks when they post stuff like that. So we do try to be as proactive as possible. Um, so yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that extra message out.
Cool. Thank you.
Hey, just one final reminder, Christmas in the park, December 11th. I didn't have that in my report. Uh, we start in the morning with the, uh, Santa. Um, uh, community Santa, uh, trip around town where he's followed around town with the fire truck and we hand out treat bags. And, uh, then at five o'clock, we start the Christmas in the park. It's going to be bigger and better than ever. Uh, and so we hope a lot of people will come out and enjoy that event and hopefully the weather will hold out for us.
I've, I've had a ton of people asking me about that. I don't know if it's just everybody being antsy that we're still one of the only states like wearing masks and having massive restrictions, but everybody is, is super excited for Christmas in the park. They've been asking me questions. They want to be involved. People from out of town have been asking me. So, uh, I've, I've been delighted to tell everyone this year that we're yet again planning a, a bigger, better event than we have had in the past.
It's going to be fun.
Or do it.
Anybody have anything else for the good of the order? Well, we've got no correspondence and no executive session. So if there is nothing else, I have seven thirty-seven. We will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.